Just to check, um, do we still have people coming in? I think we're going over nineteen of the screenings. Okay, just wanted to know if we can begin on our.
Okay, well, it is now, no, not yet. Okay, well, can we make that, uh, county attorney, can you make that announcement for me, please? Um, I'm gonna ask our county attorney to make a statement as to why we're gonna be a little delayed. And I do for the public to just know that Commissioner Wilson is on the phone, and it is an excused on-the-phone call due to health issues. So I now will ask the county attorney to explain again why we will wait for a fourth commissioner in person.
So Chair, as you know, the, in order for the board to have a forum, we need four members present. And while the law does allow a commissioner to call in, that commissioner calling in does not count towards your quorum. So, once we get four of you physically present in the room, we will have a quorum, and Commissioner Wilson can fully participate, including voting. But we just need four commissioner bodies in the room first.
Okay, thank you. And we do want to say again, thank you to all of you who are here, who are practicing social distancing. And again, I think definitely if you're within six feet, put your mask on. But if you're up speaking and six feet away from someone, it is okay to pull the mask down so that we can hear clearly, okay? So, as soon as we do get the, another commissioner, we will begin the special call meeting this evening for a budget public hearing. But thank you to those of you who are tuning in. Thank you for those of you who are here in the audience. We welcome you today.
Now we've got a waiting on the commissioner.
Our special call meeting regarding a public hearing and adoption of our 2020-2021 annual budget. I ask that you please join me as we have an invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. If you will bow your heads, please. Father God, on this day, we just celebrate you and thank you for being all-powerful and almighty. We thank you that you've given opportunity, Lord God, to serve your people and in a right way. We ask for your wisdom and guidance in all that we do. And we just thank you again for this day, especially for all those who are in pain and of concern. Let them to continue to look to you for all things. And we say this all in Jesus' name, and those that agree, please say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again. Thank you for those of you who are here, those who are viewing. And again, thank you for your patience today. Uh, we do have Commissioner Wilson, who is on phone. According to our bylaws, he's able to dial in due to medical issues by phone to participate in the meeting. And we are grateful to have our commissioners that are here today. So at this time, again, our purpose of this special call meeting is to discuss budget public hearing comments and to also have further comments by the board as we adopt the 2020-2021 annual budget. I'm looking towards our attorney to, again, come and speak towards, as we began this meeting, to help clarify, you know, the purpose of tonight's meeting, again, and why we're doing it again tonight. Okay, so I will do that. So at this time, we're here to discuss the bu- public bu- uh, budget public hearing and also the adoption of the 2021-21 budget for this special call meeting. Is there a motion to accept the agenda? We have Commissioner Barm, I heard Commissioner Clemmons. Are there any discussions? Commissioner Wilson, any comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, so at this time, we've heard a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise by signaling. And Commissioner Wilson, please say if you're in favor and not.
In type.
Okay, um, so we have now accepted the agenda, and we're now moving forward regarding our financial services update. So thank you, Mr. Jockstatter. Thank you for.
Thank you, Chair. So as, as you're well aware, this is our first meeting back in person since March. And in the interim, we've done the best we could do by trying to continue to do business remotely. And, um, the first couple of board meetings we had went relatively smoothly. The, the first couple of meetings we had were relatively smooth, given the technology challenges we had. But then when we opened up public hearings through Zoom, they weren't as, as good as we wanted them to be. And, and I think at the end of the Zoom meeting on, uh, May nineteenth, which was when the board had public comment and actually adopted the budget, I think we concluded that the, the Zoom process just wasn't sufficient for public comment. And in order to ensure that we did have adequate opportunity for public comment, I recommended, and I don't think anybody really objected strenuously, but I, I recommended that we do this tonight wherein we have what will essentially be our third public co- public hearing and, uh, on the budget, and then have the board rescind the previous adoption and re-adopt the budget. Now, I think the plan is, and, and the management team will correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they're gonna go through the whole budget presentation again because we're time-limited. But, um, the, the real purpose, I think, would be to allow citizens to be heard as part of the public hearing. We did have a public hearing that actually went fairly smoothly on the morning of May nineteenth. So this would be our third total public hearing and probably our second good public hearing. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, you'll be asked to adopt a resolution that would rescind the budget as adopted and adopt the budget. It is the exact same budget. There's been no change. And so the, but you will hear from the public. And if there's, if the board wishes to make changes to the budget, it is, it's your budget to, to make changes to it. So I, I don't know if, um, I think David may make a quick presentation, and then you can open it up to public hearing. My understanding is we have three people sign up for public hearing, I believe, so.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and the Henry County community. A nor- no formal presentation, uh, other than what Patrick has just so eloquently described, and that's to allow the public additional time for input into the budget as presented.
Well, thank you. Okay, so at this time now, we will begin the public hearing and allow our citizens to come forward. Each citizen will be granted three minutes to speak. And I'll, of course, set the clock, um, so that you will be able to have time to share your thoughts and concerns. So, were there names that we have, or how are we gonna proceed? So if you will call their names in that order so that we can.
The three people who have signed up to speak during public comment tonight are India Henry, Nea Waller, and Olalad Atkintrund, in that order.
Okay, and I could barely hear their names, so I'm not sure if you heard. So I understand that the first one is Miss, Miss Henry. If you will please come forward now, please. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, so just a few, uh, questions related to the budget is where my, um, I want it to be heard. Um, the first one is under the Public Works category. Um, just wanted to hear some more details about plans to make Henry County a more walkable area for bike paths, sidewalks, things like that. If that has been allocated and green space has been allocated within the budget for, um, that, um, area. The other one is related to the GIS mapping. Um, and just some more details about the plans for use. And if we could find out some more information about how that is beneficial to the residents and then how, um, for, and also for county resources, how does that, um, benefit us as residents for the, um, budget for that? And then the other question is about public safety and, um, community service. Just wanted to hear a little bit more details about what type of services will be allocated under community service.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, what we'll do is allow each one to speak. And I'm looking to the county manager to see how you wanna respond once everyone has spoken, okay? Okay, thank you, and we thank you, Ms. Henry. And the next name, please.
Nea Waller.
Ms. Waller.
Hello, um, my name is Nea Waller, and I'm a citizen of Henry County. And I recently, um, began a Facebook page slash organization called Citizens for a Safer Henry County. Um, so we have started what I am calling the reallocate and remove movement. Um, so the first ba- half of that deals with what I wanna talk about for the budget today. So, we noticed that, based on the budget, um, public safety currently gets fifty-two percent of the whole Henry County budget. And as we are currently rocked by the events of the deaths of Ahmaud Arbery, but a bit closer to home, um, the critical injury of Jalen Hughes in Henry County, as well as the police brutality attack that Desmond Morrow was, um, happened to Desmond Morrow in Henry County as well, we are asking that you guys reallocate some of those funds from the Henry County Police Department specifically and move them over to community development programs to deal with what we feel are the, um, true causes of crime, such as lack of financial, uh, stability, as well as housing issues, as well as issues of homelessness. Currently, um, we do not have any homeless resources in Henry County at all. I've called around, I haven't been able to hear anything. Um, I've also went, uh, did a bit of a deep dive into, uh, some of our other community development programs, such as Connecting Henry, as I tried to move around the website. Um, a lot of the links were broken, and I was not able to find any resources really at all. The copyright had not been updated in two years, which means they haven't been able to post any really new content in two years. Also reached out to that organization. And one of the things that they said they would really appreciate was more space. Um, I also reached out to the Henry County Library System, who currently is only allotted $2 million in comparison to the PD's $24 million. Um, they asked that some of that money could be used to help them have a space on Saturdays, as currently only one library is open in Henry County on Saturdays. Um, and so, yes, in conclusion, basically, we're just asking for some of the $24 million in the police budget to be reallocated to Henry County citizens to deal with what we feel are the key causes of crime. Um, the petition I emailed to you, Ms. Woods, had now has 619 signatures. Um, and that is from Henry County residents who agree that this money should be reallocated, and we should start dealing with the two, true causes of crime instead of just policing our communities. Thank you.
Olad Atkinthud.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ololade Atkinthud, and I'm a recent graduate of the University of Georgia. And, um, like Nea, will be law students in the fall. And so I'm also with Citizens for a Safer Henry County. So I just wanted to reiterate some of the points she touched. So when we are asking for reallocation of the police department funds, um, I just wanna emphasize that it is a gradual process. We're not seeking, um, all $24 million to immediately be placed in different facets of the community. But we wanna get to a point where, um, instead of the police being the first point of contact, we, we can see community-based models where, um, members of the community are leading and being the ones that are contacted in the case of, um, any crime that isn't violent. And so, um, I just wanted to also touch on Jalen Hughes. And even though the Rashad Brooks case that happened in Atlanta isn't necessarily in our county, it just goes to show how excessive police force can get and how if there were instances of funds being allocated to social workers or, um, different members of the community, that situation could have been avoided. Um, and I also would like to touch on the fact that the Department of Family and Children only gets $100,000 each year, whereas the police department gets over $24 million. So again, just reaching back into our communities and investing in that could potentially lower crime instead of, um, continuously funding more money into the police department. And lastly, I would like to implore the commissioners to consider adding a pandemic fund or something relating to health to the 2020 to 21 budget, especially considering, um, we may be facing a second COVID wave. And if I'm not mistaken, um, general health only gets less than half a million dollars each year. Um, so just considering the context of the times, coronavirus, um, a lot of people like health insurance, ensuring, um, people can be tested. I think placing our money there or slowly reallocating our money there instead of continuously to the police department might prove helpful. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, is there anyone else that we have that would like to speak during this public hearing? Again, is there anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing? Okay, well, we thank you for those who, um, did come and, and offer some thoughts and recommendations and questions. And now we're gonna invite up our county management team to help us respond back to those questions. So thank you again. All right, Ms. Matthews, our county manager.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the commission. Um, certainly want to first thank the public for being here during the public process, um, because certainly we do like to hear from the public in terms of how we develop our budget. Um, as I was sitting there taking down the notes, one of the things that I've jotted down is that next year, we're definitely going to work towards creating more town hall meetings with the public as we develop our budget so that they can understand the process and specifically what a number of the department's roles and responsibilities are. Um, I think the first question that was posed was regarding the Public Works category or Public Works line item that's currently in our budget. And the question was, does that budget include, um, green space or plans for walkable, um, areas? So it's twofold. Um, as you all will remember, this board did authorize our Transportation Planning Director to move forward with a Trails Plan, which does include identifying areas within the entire county for trails, sidewalks, and things of that nature. And so we are moving forward with that. As a result of this board approving that, then yes, it is in the budget. Uh, because you all did authorize funding within our Transportation Planning Department for that study to be completed. And so that has been included. It's just under the Transportation Planning, um, Department's budget. There was a question posed regarding GIS mapping and what the benefit to our community is for our GIS department. So our GIS department serves in multiple facets. They not only provide services for individuals who are looking to have, um, maps printed, um, wondering if there are specifics regarding how properties are zoned. But our GIS department played a critical role in our Census 2020 preparation. Um, as part of Census 2020, there were a lot of census block and track data that had to be developed. And there were maps that were required in terms, in, in order for us to proceed through that process. And so they are there to assist with that. But they also are support to residents who may have specific questions regarding the zoning of property that may be contiguous to their property. Um, they also provide maps for, um, identifying who property owners are in respective areas. And so it is definitely a department that not only services the community, but it also provides services to our cities as well, um, if they're looking for information. There was a question posed regarding library hours on Saturday. Um, if this board will recall, we did initially have that included in our initial budget presentation to the board. COVID arrived, and we had to go back and reevaluate some of those critical services. One of the things that we did present to the board is that we will bring a budget back to you all in January of 2021 to reevaluate those items that we weren't able to move forward with. Right now, there is still a lot of uncertainty in terms of where our budget lies. And I think you all will recall that our, um, Financial Services Director, Mr. Smith, mentioned that we need to get through at least this final, the next month or two, to figure out where we are from a sales tax perspective and then from a revenue perspective. And so I don't think that at this point, it is the desire of the board not to move forward with, um, allocating that additional, I think it was $180,000 or $118,000 for the library to actually have Saturday hours. We have continued, though, to fund the library every year within our budget, and we are funding them at, at $2 million in the current budget. The only thing that is currently not being funded is that additional hundred-plus-thousand dollars for Saturday hours. And so that is something that, again, we will bring back to the board in January. There are also references regarding, um, Department of Family and Children Services and the Health Department, and the individual is correct, that we do have a small portion that we do allocate to those respective departments, but they are state agencies. And so their total budget, or at least ninety percent of their budget, or ninety-five percent of their budget, comes from the state. What we did do this year, if you all will recall in the past, we have looked to reduce those agencies' budgets anywhere from one to five percent every year. But we did recommend to this board that we not make any cuts to those respective departments because we knew that we were going through this pandemic and that there would certainly be more pressure on those respective departments. And so, again, the allocation that's shown within our County General Fund is just the county's allocation, and it does not include what they receive from the state. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to our deputy county manager, who will speak to the public safety and community service questions that were, um, posed to the board.
Yes, ma'am. Chair, Commissioners, and thank you. The, uh, community service question is, is for our Community Service Department. That department is responsible for our, um, early, early release. They're, they pick the trash up on the side of the road. They maintain a crew of, of three personnel and a supervisor that, that actually allocates the supervision of our, our, uh, community service workers that are delegated by the judges and by the courts due to community service hours, um, to that department. Uh, public safety-wise, uh, she is correct. We have fifty-two point nine percent of our budget is, is public safety. Uh, and that's not just police, uh, that's fire, EMS, 911, EMA, animal control, um, and police. 911, EMA, animal control, um, and Police Department. Sheriff uh is also part of that process of the judicial, I mean judicial, the inmate housing and uh the sheriff's warrant and patrol division uh at that time. I'll take any other questions on the public safety.
Chairwood, our Financial Services Director just passed me a, um, just quick fact sheet on the police department. I'll place it on the overhead, but it shows that of our overall budget, the police department only makes up 14.4% of the entire budget.
And we'll add, Madam Chair, one of the things we did two years ago, if you recall in the budget, is PD had like four different budgets. We combined it in one for more transparency for the, for the Commission and the citizens to see exactly where the money in PD was, was spent at one location, not multiple different locations.
Chairwood, at this time, I don't think I've omitted any questions, but if I have, please let me know. We'll definitely try to provide a response.
Um, just listening, I'll, I'll definitely open it up to the board as well. Um, regarding the police department, can we speak to how much of our budget relates to training and assessment, or someone to explain all that the police department does? You know, special regarding sensitivity, training, and things like that, because I think that's one of the comments that I had. And then I think there was a question about, um, more about Connecting Henry and any homelessness types of discussions that may occur regarding community development. And then we'll go to Commissioner Thomas.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Thomas, then we'll go to Commissioner Clements.
Yes, ma'am. So training for the PD, their training uh, education and training budget this year is 16,900, uh, 790 dollars. Now, that is just a portion that we have to pay. We utilize the Georgia Public Safety Training Center, which all that training is sent down there, is provided by the state of Georgia, no cost, to accredited or uh, uh, police departments or public safety agencies. So that is a fraction of the cost that we send for the conferences for outside training. Uh, but all the mandated training and license requirement, certification requirements are done at Georgia Public Safety Training Center in Forsyth, and no charge.
Okay. All right. Um, was there anything regarding the homelessness strategies with community development and Connecting Henry? Anything to report on that?
Let me see, she wants to add, Connecting, Connecting Henry, as you know, we've definitely, the last few uh, few months, have uh changed our mission, and they've changed their mission and, and results to the county. Uh, it is not a county department. However, we do share resources and do provide them some building space for Connecting Henry uh, as they, they, they could carry out their mission. You want to add anything to Connecting Henry?
Yeah, we were talking about um Connecting Henry, CDBG, regarding any homelessness strategies for Henry County. That was brought up.
So as Mr. Johnson has indicated, um, that is one of the primary roles of Connecting Henry, to provide that benevolent service um to individuals that may be in dire need of, of, of any type of human service that, that they may be lacking. We also have a community development department that works with a number of agencies specifically on, or specifically um with individuals who fall within that low to mod income level. Um, one of the things that our Community Development Department is looking to work or to focus on specifically is the homelessness that we do have here in the community. And that became more and more apparent as we navigated through not only the census conversation, but as we developed our analysis of impediment through our Community Development Department. Um, one of the things we will continue to do is partner with Connecting Henry and specifically making sure that their focus is on the homelessness that we have, but also making sure that where other services are needed um within our community, that those services are being provided as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I think those are the ones that I noted, and I'll continue to review. Um, and then we'll come back to D facts, but I want to go to Commissioner Thomas right now because there was a comment about the budget for D facts. Uh, Commissioner Thomas.
Okay. What I wanted you to address, please, and let me do thank everyone for your comments and your suggestions that you've made concerning this budget. And I know you have part of this covered maybe on another title, but she mentioned a pandemic fund. And I know we have emergency funds that we have for different things of that nature. Do you have an idea of the cost that we have incurred so far uh in dealing with COVID-19? And also, would you explain where those funds are now? Meaning, do we call them emergency funds and they're general funds? Because I know you do have something already set aside, but it just may not be called a pandemic fund. Would you talk to us a little bit about that?
So we'll start off by on the public safety side. One of the things you don't realize is, is the COVID response is very, very uh, uh sophisticated, I would say. We had to put additional three units up uh and, and queue our V trucks just to have special response to the COVID incident, which that caused additional funds that were definitely not budgeted. It came out of a, a relief fund. We also have uh screening processes. We're in the process now of looking at portable screeners that will actually, you know, screen as you come in uh, for county facilities automatically. The departments, when we had the uh, the, I guess, the shutdown or remote uh teleworking process, uh, we encumbered some costs with that. However, we have encumbered some um, some relief from the CARES Act for some of our departments. Uh, and, and departments in public safety-wise not to cover the, the, the cost amount uh for that. One of the things we have not been able to do, and we worked with you, Commissioner Thomas, and, and our, our legal, is to find a way to support more local businesses. Uh, local government has a different law and set of rules than we do for just, you know, the normal banks or anything. And, and we worked hard trying to find a way to, to, to look at some kind of uh small business or community benefit to help um, help our, our citizens in need. We have a bunch of citizens in need at this time. It's been a, a pretty uh, a pretty big impact on people's lives. Uh, and unfortunately, just there's some limitations we have with local government in, in making some of that happen. But that's one of the, one of the goals we have, is trying to find a way to partner with some third party to, to do something to be um, you know, more supportive in the community.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Thomas, to date, um, about 335,000 dollars has been spent without HERO Pay. And then about 700,000 dollars in HERO Pay has been spent as a result of COVID-19.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Anything else, Commissioner?
Okay, Commissioner Clements, and then we'll check for Commissioner Wilson on the phone. Commissioner Clements, please.
Okay, so I want to basically speak to um the young ladies that have the questions and commend you on your initiative um to come back home to Henry County and to work in the community, to see us um do better and be um, be of service to our community. I want to urge you to visit the cities as well and make sure that you make your requests known to every city. There's four cities in Henry County as well. And I want to also encourage you to meet with each one of the commissioners that sit on this board to talk to us about what your concerns are and what you would like to see in Henry County. And I will tell you, when I got elected and my first time sitting on this board was 2017, our police department did not have body cameras. They now have body cameras, which was an increase to our budget. Their technology was horrible. When they would go down in certain communities with their radios, they couldn't even be reached. And so we have upgraded the technology so that if they're in the south part of the county, that at least the radios are working. Um, they were the lowest paid in the area. They were making barely minimum wages. And so we did have an increase of pay so that we could attract police officers that were educated, that had training, and that had some experience. I want to talk about the um breaking down of the cars. Even the cars that they were driving were, we would see police cars on the side of the road. This was 2017. So we've increased our police department, but public safety is way more than just a police department. Our fire department, the first ones on the scene, they would come on the scenes even before the police cars could get on the scenes. And we have finally equipped them with body armor and gear so that if they come on the scene, that they're not afraid to come in to help us out. So I want you to really meet with us, talk to me. I'm opening my doors to you to break down what our public safety is for. I understand the movement to take money from and to create uh investments in equity and inclusion programs. We didn't even have a Boys and Girls Club, and thankfully, we now have two Boys and Girls Clubs that are going up. So we are trying to make sure, my goal is to make sure that we're invested in our community and in programs that are going to make sure that we reduce crime and recidivism in our community. So I want you to talk to us. I want us to find where we can get more money, make sure that there is no override on money that shouldn't be going, going to our public safety, but make sure that our public safety is equipped. We weren't there in 2017. So unlike a whole lot of the larger cities, Henry County is kind of on the verge of becoming a new place. Um, we didn't have a whole lot of what we have now four years ago. And so we need you, we need your voices. But I want you to speak, and I want you to know everything. I want you to be educated and know all the ins and outs, where the money's going, where more money can come from, what programs we have. Connecting Henry, although they have the name, it is not a county-funded program. That is a private, nonprofit entity that has the county's name. And so there's a lot of information that I want to share with you and give to you. I thank you for your courage. I thank you for the organizational initiative. And we're going to support you. We're going to see that what happens in Henry County is for the betterment of the citizens of Henry County. So as an AU Center grad, I'm with you, and let's do it. But I want you to come up here, and I want you to stand in knowing that our police department, we need to make sure that they have everything they have to make sure that the crime rate in Henry County stays down and that there's transparency. When we did the body cameras, it wasn't just for the police officers, but I wanted to make sure that a citizen on the street that said that something happened, that we had proof that our police officers were doing what they were supposed to be doing. And if they weren't, that we could try them as they should be tried. So thank you all for being here tonight, and I open my doors for you.
Thank you. Very well stated, Commissioner Clements. Um, Commissioner Wilson, do you have any comments or questions?
No, ma'am, I don't have any.
Okay, Commissioner Barnes?
Uh, yes, Chair, getting back to the budget, I want, I want to make a comment that y'all did a great job putting this budget together. Uh, it's been a trying time for Henry County and the country. And um, you know, I'm glad to know in, in January that we're going to revisit some of this stuff, and we're going to try to uh do some things that we weren't able to do in this year's budget due to COVID and the other things going on. And I hope at that time, we'll have a public hearing so we'll get some public input in, in January from our citizens, a lot of them here tonight, that, that, that we need to hear from them. And uh, as far as the police department, I think we got one of the best police departments in the state of Georgia. And uh, I stand behind them. And uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, um, just a point or two. Um, one, I understand that there was a federal order that came through today, and I've not been able to interpret all of it, but especially as it related to some of the questions and comments that came regarding reallocation of funding to police departments and redirecting funding to Saul. Can you, can you all elaborate on that and what your interpretation is so far?
So Chairwood, that's actually what I've kind of been going back and forth with the attorney on. Um, he just dropped it to me. And so there are multiple sections to the executive order um that was issued by President Trump this afternoon. And it's a Safe Policing for Safe Communities. Um, it's quite extensive, but I will highlight a couple of the things that have been identified. Um, specifically, there is a statement that the Attorney General shall certify independent credentialing bodies that meet standards to be set by the Attorney General. Um, reputable, independent credentialing bodies eligible for certification by the Attorney General should address certain topics in the reviews, such as policies and training regarding use of force and de-escalation techniques, performance management tools, such as early warning systems that help to identify officers who may require intervention, and best practices regarding community um engagement. There's also a statement regarding the state or local law enforcement agency's use of force policies, prohibiting the use of chokeholds, a physical maneuver that restricts an individual's ability to breathe for the purposes of incapacitation, except in those situations where the use of deadly force is allowed by law. Um, there's a section on information sharing, and then a database um that is required in terms of, the database shall include a mechanism to track, as permissible, terminations or de-certifications of law enforcement officers, criminal convictions of law enforcement officers for on-duty conduct, and civil judgments against law enforcement officers for improper use of force. And there's quite a bit more. So what I would ask is that you all would allow us an opportunity to get with our county attorney, summarize this information. We'll share it with the board, and then definitely follow back up in a formal setting to present um the information back to the community that may um want more information in terms of this. What we will commit to is making sure that we are in line with what this order calls for. Um, so we'll definitely report back to the board on that.
Well, and more importantly, because we're in a budget hearing as well, we need to understand what potential budget impacts that we need to revisit is, is relating to not just that order, but anything that we will continue to move forward to make sure that, again, we, we're a county of excellence, and we've come a long ways. I totally agree with all that Commissioner Clements eloquently stated. We've come a long ways, baby, to definitely address all of the concerns and improvements and enhancements that are needed for all of our public safety teams. Um, one other thing, um, I just want to share with those who are viewing and those that are here. I do commend those who came and spoke during our public hearing, those that are viewing, um, and those that even attempted during that Zoom hearing. And we've, out of integrity and out of, of the initiative to try to want to be transparent, we thought it would be best to have this public hearing today as our county attorney explained to you all.